Five thirty, I'll call the media in the Ramsey County Commission order, please join me in the pledge. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Want to welcome everybody in attendance, both in person and online. Our first item on the agenda for tonight would be the approval of the November seventh meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented, as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda, any additions to the agenda? Was there anything that we needed to add, Candy? In regards to that? I'll take a look at it first.
I'll move to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as published. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Four forty-five or five forty-five, we'll have the foreclosures sale, we'll move on down to Kevin. Can you fit it in at fifteen minutes? All right, ready, set, go.
Okay, starting off, our motor graders, the engines on those are supposed to have the valves at every twenty-five hundred hours and every five thousand hours. That's not a warranty issue, so I got a price from Butler, they're about nine hundred and fifty dollars each. And all six of them, the three old ones like five thousand hours and the three new ones have twenty-five hundred hours, so all six of them need to be set. So that'll cost just under six thousand dollars, so looking for a motion to go ahead and assign valves on those motor grader engines.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to.
Set them, yep.
For six thousand dollars, you have six machines. Further discussion?
Aye.
And just for information, the glass that we put in those motor graders was less than twenty-five hundred dollars, so that's just a heads up for now, we don't, we're not paying the bill yet, but just so you know. And one other thing I had, I need to order a load of culverts for stock in the, in the shopyard. They'll cost thirty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents. Looking for a motion to go ahead and order those.
Move to approve. Second.
Thirty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents. Be a full semi-load. Yes, oh yeah. Just ordering this.
Apologize, my mic was non.
And the last thing, just an update on the, trying to hire a new employee, we had two applicants. We did interview one of them and offered them the job and they turned it down, so we're back to advertising for the pen position. That's all I have, unless you've got something for me, Les Paul, do you got something you want to add? All right.
Guys are up north doing some slush removal today.
Yeah, they had a little more snow out there today, so we took the slush out of the road.
Hopefully it doesn't get any worse, but it sounds like it will.
All right, I agree.
Appreciate you guys keeping things cleared out. Thank you. Anything else for Kevin? Appreciate you coming in. No? Okay. Sheriff Lang, welcome.
Evening. Reason I'm here tonight is the, as the sheriff's department, we've been going over our equipment, trying to update as much as we can. We've noticed that we had an issue with our sidearms. We were in contact with Glock, the assurance that we had the wrong sights on them. We switched sights and it still hasn't corrected the problem. First, we thought maybe it was just the way we were shooting, but we could pick up another handgun and shoot a lot better than what we were with these Glocks. So we started back in May just doing a little research, we got a bid to replace our handguns. Kind of mulling around, we've been kind of keeping an eye on the budget with some of the grants and stuff that we got, we were able to build up some funds. So we're here tonight to request to get fourteen new handguns for the department along with holsters and tactical lights on the pistols. Now, what's unique about these pistols, it's got a call with a halosun optic on it, which is kind of like a red dot. Couple of the officers have already got them. And it really improved the accuracy in the shooting, the officers. I know we have had a couple commissioners come out and shoot with us and we demonstrated it. Bill, who's here, he's a sergeant for the department, he's also our Glock armor and our range officer. And he brought his two pistols, so you can kind of compare if you want to look at them.
This is what we're carrying. It's just a regular Glock forty-five. What we're looking at. It's, this is what I carry on duty because I'm getting old. Focus distance is part of it. With this, it's got the red dot on it, the red dot. I can stay target focused and draw my red, and put the green dot, my screen, the red dot on the target. And I can stay focused on the target. Whereas with this, I have to focus on the target and then try and transition the focus on the sights. The accuracy, you guys, no, you guys were out there when June shot this, the accuracy with these are so much better because of the you put the dot in the target and focus it on. I did go through, last month or two months ago, low light, no light, rolling back. And the weapon lights, there is a technical advantage of having the weapon light on to your gun rather than the way I just had to distract people is, when do I have to work the throttle, one or two? With two hands, you've got two hands gripping that button to where your, it's more secure in your hand. So when you squeeze the trigger, you don't feel the recoil bad, you're sure you're ready to go back down faster. With a weapon light, you don't have to hold the flash like separate from your gun. So, half of our guys carry their own weapon lights, I carry mine. The other half, they don't have weapons, they have to purchase their own. So, like to get weapon lights, we thought about milling the blocks we have to accommodate the optic, the point of warranty, it would weaken the slide. And what was the cost of it, I was like, three hundred dollars a gun?
Yes, about three hundred bucks a gun.
With trade value, our old weapons are our ones, the, if we can get a new weapon for just a little bit more, it's still important. I did bring these, one of them, but just to compare. The other thing I, I, my weapons, they're just all gone. As commissioners, we want to be optimistic towards the end of the week, we have if it comes down to liability, if we, our shoot rounds up and our targets are we miss our target, our property or got a different person. That's zero checks for our abilities, where with the optic, we have our, our sight.
And the ultimate goal in this is to get everybody the same pieces of equipment, so forever in a situation, parts, swap out, mags swap out, lights swap out, everybody's got the same, now it's kind of much larger, who has it, who doesn't have it. And it's a lot of officer safety, to protect our officers, to give them the advantage if they ever had to get in or had to use it. So how, how it would work, we would purchase the new pistols, they run about eight hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-two cents. We trade in our old ones and they give us two hundred and ninety dollars a pistol. We do have the option, the officers have the option to do a buyback to the company, we buy, buy them back for about three hundred and sixty dollars if we wanted to keep our old weapon. So with the holsters and the lights, we're going to purchase fourteen handguns and then there'll be thirteen holsters and lights. And the reason we went with fourteen handguns is we like to have a spare on hand in case there is one that's faulty and we, an officer needs it. Or if an officer is ever involved in an officer-involved shooting, that officer gun would be taken and we can replace it with another one. All totaled together, we're requesting eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. I've been through my budget a couple times, talked to Candy, I do got plenty of money in my budget in the equipment fund, like I said, we've been with the grants and stuff that we got, we freed some money up so we can hopefully make these purchases and we kind of budgeted a little extra in this budget, hoping to do this, next budget we won't have it. So, if you got any questions for us on this, we'd be happy to try to answer them. This is coming out of your twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five budget, this will be out of my twenty-four budget.
You able to get them in time to, to get it in that?
Yeah, we talked to the company today, just to make sure that our quote was still good, they had assured us they could get us the bill and get us the guns right away. So.
Think it's a good deal. Question from the commissioner?
I have none.
Anybody want to make a motion there, go ahead and allow the sheriff to go ahead with the purchase of these?
I would say move.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second to approve the purchase of the fourteen new handguns, thirteen new holsters and all the other accessories that are listed. Eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, if that's all I had, unless you had something for me.
Anybody else have anything for the sheriff? Appreciate you guys coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Sergeant Earl, thank you. It is time. Five forty-five, it's time for the foreclosure sale. And everybody that's interested in bidding on the foreclosures should have gotten a terms of annual sale. Got a bid number. I don't think I need to sit here and read through that for everybody's enjoyment, so. How it works is I will call out the parcel and the minimum sale price. And you have the opportunity to go through and bid that up. And until we have a final bidder is declared, so. One dollar, no sets, okay. First item on the docket would be the Webster Township. Is that correct? We could hold it up on the persevere if we could. That I believe is in Garski, we're right on the outskirts of the community of Garski. First number, ready? One zero. And zero, 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 four, one, four, zero, zero, zero. Oh, you already got it. Okay. Price value minimum bid sale is thirteen hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Anybody like to start off the bidding? Bid number four, bidder number four. Bid number four, I would assume bidding at the minimum price. Okay?
I'll go two thousand.
Okay? Bidder number two. Do I hear? Two thousand one? Bidder number one, two thousand one?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred? Twenty-five hundred? Pardon me?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five fifty?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Three.
Three thousand? Three thousand? Thirty-one hundred? Thirty-one hundred? Thirty?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two? Thirty-two hundred? Thirty-two hundred additional bids? Thirty-two hundred?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three? Thirty-three hundred? Thirty-three hundred? Thirty-four? Thirty-four hundred? Thirty-four hundred? Thirty-five? Thirty-five hundred? Thirty-six? Thirty-six hundred? Thirty-six? Five thousand? Five thousand? Five thousand?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one hundred?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five? Fifty-five hundred? Fifty-five hundred, a bidder number four?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six? Six thousand? Six thousand? Six thousand, a bidder four? Sixty-one hundred?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two hundred? Sixty-two hundred? Sixty-two hundred? Sixty-two fifty? Sixty-five hundred? Sixty-five hundred? Sixty-five? Sixty-six hundred? Sixty-six hundred? Sixty-six hundred? Sixty-six, sixty-seven? Sixty-seven hundred dollars and fifty? Sixty-eight? Sixty-eight fifty?
Twenty-five.
Sixty-eight, twenty-five, okay? Seven thousand? Seven thousand? Additional bids, seven thousand? Seven thousand, going once? Seventy-two? Seventy-two hundred? Seventy-two hundred? Additional bids, seventy-two hundred? Seventy-two? Seventy-three and four? Seventy-four hundred? Seventy-four, so here, seventy-four? Seventy-four hundred? Seven, seventy-five hundred, seventy-six hundred? Seventy-six hundred? Seventy-six, going once? Seventy-eight? Seventy-eight hundred? Seventy-nine hundred? Eight thousand? Eight thousand? Eight thousand?
Eight-two?
Eight-two hundred? Eight-two hundred? Eight-two? Eight-two going once? Eight-two going twice? Eighty-three? Eighty-four? Eighty-four hundred dollars, bidder number four? Eighty-four hundred dollars? Eighty-four going once? Eighty-five? Eighty-six? Eighty-six hundred dollars? Eighty-six going once? Eighty-six hundred going twice? Sold, eighty-four hundred, eighty-six hundred? bidder number four? Next one is the lot in the city of Devil's Lake? Next two are in the city of Devil's Lake, but this one is thirty-nine, zero, 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 one, two, zero, zero, zero. And I think this has been up on the foreclosure lot for a number of years. Twenty-four thousand, seven, twenty-nine, ninety-eight? For that piece of property that's highlighted? Have anybody wishing to bid on that lot? Anybody? Anybody bidding on that lot, thirty-nine? Zero, 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 one, two, zero, zero, zero? Going once? Going twice? Auctions closed on that item? No bidders. Next item is city of Devil's Lake, thirty-nine, zero, 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 eight, eight, zero, eight, or zero, zero, zero? Lots, eight, nine, block one fifty-seven. Starting bid of seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-three cents. Minimum? Seven oh four? No, wrong, wrong one? Fifty-nine, sorry. Seven sixty-one fifty-nine, minimum bid of, bidder number four? Do I hear another, any other bids? Seven sixty-one fifty-nine? Any other bids? Any other bids? Three nine, zero, 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 eight, eight, zero, 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 highlighted property? Any other bids? Going once? Going twice? Sold, bidder number four? Seven sixty-one fifty-nine? Where we at here, Candy, Edmore? Edmore, parcel number four, zero, zero, eight, zero, one, zero, nine, seven, two, six, zero, zero, zero? Lot seven, block one, Julian subdivision, B, twenty-two, home edition? Is that the hundred and eighty thirty-four? Hundred and eighty thirty-four, any bidders? Bidder number four?
I'll go three hundred.
Three hundred? Three hundred? Three fifty?
Four hundred.
Four hundred? Four hundred? Do I hear anything additional, four hundred? Four hundred? Going once? Going twice? Sold, four hundred dollars, and bidder number two? We go into the lots up in Loughton?
Yeah.
All right. Lot nineteen, block five? Lot nineteen, block five? So we have uh? Basically a city block of the city of Lawton, kind of almost. In the four different lots, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Lot nineteen, block five, we'll start with that one. Six twenty-two twenty-five, do I have any bidders? Any bidders? Lot nineteen, block five, going once, going twice? Auctions closed. Lot twenty, block five, same price, six twenty-two twenty-five? Do we have any opening bids? Six twenty-two twenty-five? Six twenty-two twenty-five for lot twenty, block five, going once, going twice? Auctions closed. Moving on to lot twenty-one, block five, same price, six twenty-two twenty-five? Do we have any opening bids on? Lot twenty-one, block five, any opening bids? Any opening bids? Going once, going twice? Auctions closed. Lot twenty-two, block five? Lot twenty-two, block five? Six twenty-two twenty-five is the opening bid? Anybody? Bidding on lot twenty-two, block five? Going once? Going twice? Auctions closed on lot twenty-two, block five? And that here ends the night's foreclosure sale. Want to thank everybody for attending? And all those that bitted. Really? He's a real estate mogul. Thank you, you too. Next item on the agenda would be the unfinished business of the Ramsey County Water Resource Comprehensive Plan. Any additions or updates?
None. No, we're having a meeting tomorrow night. At City Plaza, five o'clock.
Five o'clock, City Plaza?
Yep.
Okay. Would assume those are open to the public?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to new business approval letter for clerical tax errors. Wasn't sure if this is something that elevated up to us, but. Some clerical errors on a piece of property. That was pointed out. We just need to make those adjustments. Is that correct?
Um, yes, because it went back so many years that um. Instead of doing an abatement that we wanted the board to approve. The letter going, going ahead with us reimbursing. The landowner for the years past.
Normally we just go back two years, is that correct?
Correct.
And so that's the reason for coming before us tonight. So just need a motion, go ahead and do that.
So moved.
We have motion and second to go ahead with the clerical errors. And the. From the tax director. And uh on that parcel, going back the four years instead of just the two. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor is signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be uh water board appointments. There's two opening slots at the end of the year. Not sure if these have been advertised or open to the public. In our packets, we have a couple of existing members that expressed interest. I guess I would like to see if this has been opened and. Allowed for other individuals if interested to apply for those open positions. Term expires at the end of the year.
Now that only makes sense, it has to be advertised, correct? We don't, don't know if it was. Okay.
I just made copies because they. Yep, I can do that.
Go ahead with an advertisement? Okay. Want that in the form of a motion or just go ahead and do it?
No, I'll just go ahead and do it. It's just a form, it's. Standard form of procedure to do that. I have others, so.
Okay.
Just do them all at once.
I think all the board appointments are at the end of the year, so.
Yep.
Any additional should be advertised as well. Okay. Should be about it. Visitors and delegations? Anybody have anything for the commissioner tonight? Speak now or for a roll of your peace? And I'll pronounce you, no. That's another roll. Okay, uh, any other announcements from board members?
None.
Commission members, LEC meets tomorrow morning, uh, hey, in the LEC? I know uh there's been talk about a new facility, corrections facility. And I think some, a building committee has met and uh got some side ideas proposed. We're working with a uh group out of uh Indiana, Olivatus. Is their architectures, corporate firms specialize in design of correction facilities? And uh, that will be an ongoing discussion and uh with the upcoming legislative session coming up. We're hoping that something can get proposed on that level. Sheriff Langy have anything regarding that? Right, so we'll continue to do those discussions and be as open and transparent to the public as possible. We'll have public meetings going forward. Once we get a better rendering of what we're looking at and where it could be potentially located. And uh we'll move forward that way. Had a chamber meeting yesterday, uh, they have a lot of great things going on. With the Chamber of Commerce, I think uh their holiday festival is coming up on November thirtieth. They'll have a um, a lot of downtown activities going on. It's also Small Business Saturday and then they'll have a tree lighting in the Bridgestone Park. They down across from Thompson's and uh where the old firestone used to be. They'll have a uh tree up there and then they'll flip the switch and. Hopefully uh clerk Riswold was out and got the tree lit up and decorated, so. Got a lot of fun things, a lot of Santa's gonna be around. They'll have a cookie or hot chocolate and cider. Uh being sold by various groups and uh should be a lot of fun. With that, I have no other announcements. Commissioners?
No, nothing.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.